Well, shall we get started? And Kathy will come in when she comes in. So, just for everybody's knowledge, there's two meetings tonight. The first will be our budget hearing, and we'll go through that and open that meeting. And then we'll adjourn and then move into our second meeting. I do want to lead off with, I have a couple of issues with work that I may end up having to step away for a minute from to answer some phone calls. I'll leave it up to the remainder of the board as to how you want to handle that. It'll probably take me a few minutes each of those calls. So if I do have to step out, if you want to take a recess during that time, or if somebody else wants to step up and take the role, I'd be glad to relinquish the chair. But otherwise, I just want to give everybody that heads up that I may have to step out quick. But we will call the meeting to order, the budget hearing meeting, public budget meeting to order, I'm sorry. Recognition of our visitors, these will be the same for both meetings. Wes Kent with fully equipment and John Abey. Any other guests who are here would like to introduce themselves. With the budget hearing, we take statements from the members of the Board of Trustees. Dan, would you like to start, sir?
Yes, well, I've been looking over the budget and I've got a lot of questions about it. So as we go through it, I've got some things to ask about.
Go ahead, sir. Yeah, that's what this is for.
Okay. All right. Well, open up your budgets to page one. Now, I was talking with Dr. Forney about this just a little bit, and I do have some questions about how things work in this budget. Other, 450 to 4990, there's a big increase in the amount that is from a million, a million and a half in 1516 to five million this year, or last year, but a year in between, seven million. So I'm kind of wondering what other actually is in revenues. What is other?
That could be, and I'm going to guess here because I don't know, and I've contacted the state on some of these reports, and I found out that actually Johnson County Community College assembles and compiles the data, and I've contacted them, and they have not responded. So I have some concerns about some of the veracity of the information in the reports myself, because when I go back to the audit statements, and when I go back to what we have reported on the budget forms that we submit to the state, as far as unrestricted funds, I can't come back to these numbers that are in this particular report that has been prepared by Johnson County. So these are our statistical reports. I noticed that they were in your information last year and we request it again this year. But I'm going to guess, and I did see this in, that there were bond or proceeds for the, I guess, building of the Student Activity Center. Now then, I don't think that those funds should be considered into current unrestricted. Those are plant funds and capital outlay funds, and probably should not have been included in current unrestricted. So again, I don't know why they were included in the particular category.
Would that also include revenue from wind farms?
I would think that the revenue from wind farms would be in your county and local area, your AdVORM there. But again, not knowing how Johnson County, from what sources, from what line of items in the budgets that we submitted, where are they put these numbers? I can't answer that question.
Then, I was talking to you about that, but under federal, if you look up above there a little ways, 410 to 419, you can see in 1516, it's 115,000. I'm rounding everything off, and 1617, 88,000. And then the next year, and that's .3 percent, the 88,000 is, but the next year, 1718, it's 5,380,000, and that's also .3 percent. There's got to be a typo in there.
Well, I questioned the 5.387 million. I don't know if they're including federal financial aid in there. It just seems very odd unless we go to big grant, I guess, the year before that I'm aware of.
I don't think we got anything like that. And it seems like it would be included in 1718, and it was a federal thing, it'd be student aid, it'd be in 1617 also.
Exactly. There's no rhyme or reason to the logic of how that's presented.
Well, that wouldn't be the typo, would it?
No, I don't believe so. That was $2.5 million.
But see, that would be restricted funds, because you can only use those funds for the restricted. And so they shouldn't be in this category.
I wonder why Johnson County is in charge of that.
I don't know. Cable Works told me that they kind of quit doing this report back in 2014, and Johnson County kind of picked it up.
Well, that's because Joe was CFO at Johnson County for many, many years, and then he became president, so probably.
You know, when you have information like this, and you see it, and you see, that doesn't make all sense, it makes you kind of question the validity of other information in the report. Because this page one kind of correlates to page seven, where they've overstated our expenditures. So they've overstated our income and they've overstated our expenditures, and I can't find it anywhere in our financial statements or the budget forms that we submitted to Kansas Board of Regents.
Well, that line item on other is fairly sizable. When you get to 1718, it's over $5 million, and I just wondered, where does $5 million come from? You know, what's other? And the same thing on the next one, auxiliary, 9,800. There's not a lot of money in that line, it's, you know, a million and a half, and it's pretty consistent all the way across, but what is auxiliary revenue, and where does it come from? What is it?
Now, auxiliary revenues, in this case, may be pertaining to your bookstore, your residential housing, and your food services.
Does the 9,800 behind it signify which line item it is?
In the budget?
On, yes, because it says auxiliary. I mean, each of them has a different line item number.
Well, the codes, the codes there are the revenue codes that we use, and standard codes that are used throughout the state of Kansas. So when I see these codes, 410 to 419, we would have codes for them. But I've gone back and looked at our trial balances for those last few years, and we're not even close to anywhere to this $5 million figure.
Then that's significant. If we're not meeting what the codes are saying that that line item is, that is a concern.
Well, see, it goes from...
And that's why I said I can't figure out where they're coming up with the information.
It goes from a million and a half in 1516 to seven million in 1617.
Now then, I will say this, having worked with a lot of spreadsheets, if you're putting data in, and then you're trying to compile them into one spreadsheet, it's very easy to grab one cell from one spreadsheet and carry it over inadvertently to another spreadsheet. So could they have carried over data from another college? I don't think that's very possible.
All right, on down, on my expenditures, under academic support, 4,000 code, what is that? Is that for, what is academic support?
What's academic?
Well, it's not grants or anything, is it?
No, academic support is going to be, for example, library, your library resource center, your student academic resource center, things like that.
Okay. Then institutional support, 6,000, what is that?
Institutional support. Institutional support would be...
It's a fairly big line item.
Yeah, that's going to be all of your other expenditures that are not instructional, that are not research, public service, academic support. So let me give you an example. Any expenses related to board activity, that's going to be included. The president's office is included. Personnel office, HR, federal compliance office. Some of these have some pretty big administrative services, our copy center, data processing, IT, institutional technology, central stores and facilities. So those are some of the items that are included in that, so there's quite a few of them.
It's a big chunk of money. I'll see, will we or can we get a printout on that, of what actually is included under that institutional support?
I can't.
The items, okay. All right, and then I noticed on student services, that between 1516 and today, or last year, we've gone down about 30% in our, is that student services? We're not, we're still doing, we're still taking care of the kids, right?
You're talking, are you still on page one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Student services, line item 5,000.
Yeah, and let me tell you kind of what's in student services. Wanted to make sure I was kind of... Student services, and this is going to be Vice President Tomat's area, so you've got the Dean of Enrollment there, special needs students, obviously the Vice President of Student Affairs and Risk Management, student counselors, student financial aid, student disciplinary, judicial office, recruiting and admissions, commissions, the testing center, and then you have all of the athletics that fall into that category.
Okay. Can we reduce, we no longer have the dean of students. That position that was around 9,000.
At that time, we probably did, but we kind of eliminated that.
And again, auxiliary expenses, just what doesn't come under another category?
Well, auxiliary again is your bookstore, food services, residential housing.
The cafeteria doesn't fall under that, does it?
Food services, even actually, I think our child development center maybe a little bit, but it just kind of, we don't really try to operate that for profit, we just kind of work even, that's the thing. Where the residential housing, we try to make money to pay off the bonds.
And I was a little, I came across on the next page, down towards the bottom, it says, and I believe in this statement, I believe what we're saying is, there's right on, but that last, next to last sentence says, "God City Community College recognizes the existence of individual learning styles and is committed to providing quality instructional programs." And in this last week or 10 days, I've had several students contact me and say, they feel that they're being sort of cheated or shortchanged. They learn best in face-to-face classroom situations, and yet they're being forced to take a lot of classes online, and that the classes online actually cost more, and they're not as effective learning with this population. I've had three students, which, you know, I don't have a lot of contact with students, but that's quite a few for me, just to call me or text me on the blue and say, you know, how come we don't have more face-to-face instructors at the college?
And we're one of the few schools, Dan, unfortunately, that don't give a lot of online. I mean, we're probably the lowest online school in the state right now. But like Kobe and other schools are really going online and doing a lot of, percentages are doing well. This is the first school I've been to that we don't have very many online courses. So that's an interesting statement, because we have a lot of, that's weird. I don't know what they're talking about, because we don't do comparatively to most schools, and online is one of those educational modes of study. We don't do as many as we should, and we should probably be looking at some online, because you have a single parent, or you have students that are working at nights or working during the weekends or whatever, a lot of those students will take online classes. And our last two institutions, we grew each year by about 28% online, because those people, they just couldn't get to a face-to-face classroom because of all the things that are going on, you know? People are taking night shifts, or even like at the plants, you know, sometimes they go from night shift to day shift to night shift, you know? And so it's a lot easier for them to take classes. And then the students of today, I mean, my daughter being one of those, I mean, every time she walks out of, every time she walks out and gets in the car, she has some kind of, you know, whether it be a cellphone, or, you know, or a tablet, or whatever, you know? So the modern student loves that kind of stuff, and a lot of them will take 12 hours, they'll take 12 hours face-to-face and then six hours, you know, online. And we're missing out a lot now. That's something that Glenn and I are talking about, we're not very competitive in our online pricing. And our online pricing should be probably close to what face-to-face is, so that's where we need to start working on. And we're looking at that pretty closely, so we'll be bringing that to you, because I think it's important. And we really don't have, you know, Scott tries to work on the online stuff, but we really need somebody here dedicated to online learning, and then also, then what you also have is you have tutoring online and things like that that can have students.
Well, they just made the comment, made the comment that it was a little more expensive than the face-to-face, and of course, as an old teacher, I think face-to-face is more effective, but, you know.
Yeah. But you know, with modern-day students now, I can promise you, even in school systems, I mean, at USD, they do a lot of online stuff. And so it's very, you know, that's where we're missing the boat a little bit there, and I'm going to be probably talking to you all about looking at some, but I also want to be competitive with the online. Thank you for bringing that up, because I think that's where we're really missing the boat. A lot of our students are really wanting to take, you know, 12 hours face-to-face, but they also want to take six hours online. I mean, on weekends, they're out over there in their residence halls, and they can take those and go.
That's all good, but I just think a lot of our population really likes, you know, face-to-face instruction. I mean, going to college is an experience.
Right.
And staying at home and looking at a screen is a different experience.
Well, you can even ask Michelle, sorry to pick on you, Michelle, was your doctor was all online, wasn't it? Every bit of it?
Except for the project.
Yeah.
Was this in general ed courses they were taking, Dan?
Yes, it was. And that's a conversation people do have. People do have that conversation about, you know, if it's a developmental class, probably doesn't need to be taken face, they need to face-face. Those students that are basically self-motivated and doing well, you know, my niece took all her classes online. She has a degree in accounting, and so, you know, and you have a lot of that.
Well, that's what this young lady is, wants to be in accounting, so maybe she's going to carry a lot more of the chills.
It's the CPA stuff.
And just wanted to point out on page six, and I don't know the reason, but I was hoping maybe someone here would be able to fill me in. You look at Barton County, which has about the same funding we have approximately, and it's about the same size of college, but they have almost three times as many students as we have. They make no part...
Military.
They have, they have...
Military.
Junction City is Barton County Community College area, and everybody from Fort Riley attends Barton County Community College.
And most of their stuff is online.
They do?
Yes.
Online?
For years.
That's a long way from Junction City to Barton County.
Right, they take all the classes in Junction City and, no, they have buildings.
So Barton County goes to Junction City.
Yes.
Great.
Years and years.
Always, yeah, they have a large population. If you drive, you drive around and see, you'll see Barton County signs all over the color of the state.
I haven't driven around Junction City for many years, so...
But they do, they have a large presence, and most of that, by the way, most of that's online, because they do things with, I mean, I was, I know the president pretty well, and they do things on, you know, on the boats and things like that, where they take classes online, you know, on the military bases and things like that, so...
Well, I noticed our funding was approximately the same total funding, so...
And they started BART online, and that is their most productive program they've got, and it's doing quite well. They're about, most of the, if you go to their campus, and Chris can tell you that, is Chris here? Yeah, there she is. Most of their classes, you go to their campus in Greg Bend, there's hardly anybody there. It's all, it's mostly online, so...
And on page eight, I was hoping somebody could explain to me what's happening. Again, I'm comparing Barton County, but you can compare any of the counties with God City. And we're spending, Barton County, for example, the last year spent $8,654 per pupil, and we're spending almost $24,000 per pupil.
Yeah, I don't really think we are. This is coming from that same Johnson County report, and if you flip back a page and you look at our total expenditures, and they've got us spending $31,463, where do we come from? I can't even come close to that. I mean, like, it's like 25,000, the most I can come up with, and that's including a lot of capital outlay expenditures, so...
Yeah, well, you go back to 2012, and we're, you know, we're about 20% higher, but as you work your way across that page, we're up there, you know, three times what Barton County is.
It costs a whole lot more, face-to-face, it costs a whole lot more than online for students.
If that is true, then why are they charging more for online classes?
It kind of gets back to what Dr. Noto was saying, that's an area that we, I think we need to, as we evaluate our fees, tuition fees next year, need to drop that to be pretty much the same as we offer for our regular tuition. And I think you'll see a big, actually, I think we'll see a big increase in online classes. We might have to actually, if it happens the same way with the Trinity, you saw, we had to increase our class offerings in our online.
We grew, at Navarro, we grew by 28% every semester online, because people were wanting to take online classes because they didn't get to campus.
Well, especially if you're older students who work during the day, or, you know, when they say, well, I just can't get there, you know, I'm tired, well, they can do it on their own time, and so this offers them an opportunity to... Now, I will say, trustee Rockenborn, there are some students, like my son, who do not do well online. He does not have the discipline to pace himself, and of course, he had difficulty with face-to-face too, but, yeah.
You know, we were, it's funny though, a student that goes to class, comes to class, goes home or goes whatever, those are a lot less expensive than the other students that basically are living on campus in that kind of thing, so. It, there's, you know, we had one campus that we were making about $11 million a year, because it was just continual, you know? Students going into class, you know, we loaded up with 24, 30 students in a class, and then on the other side of the fence, we had another, we had residential campus, and you spend a lot more on those students.
Well, I'd like to see us put together our own figures on that. I think the public is going to be, is going to look at that and say, man, we're spending $24,000 for students, and everybody else is spending less.
It's kind of like some data that comes out of different governmental departments, and you don't know where they get it, and it's kind of skewed, and sometimes it's not accurate. So, and I, yeah, if I were to calculate it...
Work session about this number.
Yeah, if I were to calculate it, and I can show you the numbers from which I would calculate it, and it would be substantially less pushing.
Okay.
Now, and what I can do is show you what we've provided to the Kansas Board of Regents over the last three years, say, okay, here's what we've shown as actual expenditures in our general fund or vocational fund and adult education, which is current unrestricted, and that's the title on the report. So if you add up those reports, then take the FTE, which comes from Cable Works, you get a lot lower per cost of student.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see your figures on that, rather than this is evidently skewed.
Well, like I said, I need to find out from the Johnson County ladies, you know, how it was determined. Where did you get this number?
Need to compare apples to apples.
Well, that's the problem. I mean, we've discussed this historically, prior to you being here, Dr. Forney, that this particular report is horribly flawed, and always has been, because the problem with it is, is that they're not, the reporting systems are not comparable. So what we're giving them, what Johnson County's giving them aren't the same thing.
You know, it's Coffeyville and Seward didn't even respond.
Yeah, and that's what I mean, is everybody's not giving the same data, and then what they're extrapolating it, so it's just, unfortunately, you got to take it for a grain of salt.
This should recognize, you submit your state budget forms, take the data off the state budget forms, and prepare the document. Everybody's got to, should be doing the same thing.
That was one of the concerns, though, at one of our meetings, is that each college isn't doing the same thing, so they're not comparing the same things.
Kind of like the APADs report, there's that kind of problem there, too.
And part of that coming from, we've also been operating on an archaic system that doesn't report appropriately probably either, so...
We had that conversation yesterday, too. I mean, the 80s, maybe, 80s, 70s.
Okay, and did you get my request, email, the request for information about the Phoenix program, the expenses and stuff?
And Gary has it, Dr., Chairman Horsberger has it, and that's something he has, and, you know, we should, we'll bring it up.
I'd like to see where that is coming. And let's see. I'm on page, I think I've got on my, page 16, maybe? When we talk about institutional support, those are the same things we've talked about a little bit before. And instruction, is that just faculty?
Yes.
Okay. And student services, athletes, that's $3,606,000. Can you tell me how much that is athletics, and how much is student services, or is it divided anyway?
It's, I've got it listed out separately on the spreadsheet, but without taking a little bit of time to calculate it.
You can give it to me later.
Yeah, I'll be glad to give you...
You just emailed to the...
Sure.
I'm just interested in knowing. And then academic support, what is that exactly?
Again, that's the library and the student academic...
Counseling and so on.
Resource center.
And transfers, I know it's a million and a half, where do we transfer?
Okay, we transfer money from the general fund to the vocational fund for support, because it's called a mandatory transfer. We have to transfer a certain amount each year, and I've kept it consistent with what we done last year.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. On page 18, under fiscal, 1819 down at the bottom, it says expenses, Student Activity Center, gym wall, parking lot, that first amount, $373,000. How much of that was for that, was most of that for that gym wall that needed fixed?
No, this is for the bond payment, I believe, for the, it comes out of the capital outlay fund.
Okay, these are payments for, and Student Activity Center, same thing, that $258,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And then furnishings and equipment, is that campus-wide on page 19? It's about four down in fund number.
Three down.
Furnishing and equipment, $100,000?
Is that campus-wide?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now then...
Mostly furniture and stuff.
Capital outlay in this category, this is the AdVORM tax that I think at 2%, that you, I think it's 2%. What am I seeing there? Yeah, 1.999, okay, 2%. This is the AdVORM tax that you tax to, for capital outlay. It can be used for remodeling, building, furnishings, anything kind of connected to a building, equipment, furnishings, and so this $100,000 would be furnishing the equipment of building. For example, if we wanted to come in here and put new chairs in, as requested, this could be considered a furnishing of building.
Doesn't really count against your capital outlay, though, does it? Capital outlay itself is a little bit separate to this, isn't it? Well, we've got two types of capital outlay. We budget money in our general fund, and we call it capital outlay. We can use that for sidewalks, anything, any type of infrastructure. But this capital outlay, this out of Fund 61, can only be used and associated with buildings, and furnishing them, equipping them, and repairing them, and remodeling. So if we wanted to come in here and put carpeting in, that would be kind of remodeling, and we could use this, this Fund 61 for that.
Okay, and we're buying, what, 28 desks?
Rodeo, well, see, and rodeo has another, third category for capital outlay, for vocational programs, and they can get equipment and furniture, and so there's even a third category. and so there's even a third category for capital outlay.
I'm only familiar with the four, four-three so far, so. Okay, we gotta have no more questions.
Well, we're trying, and, and part of it is, Dan, we're trying to, there, there's not been a lot of money spent on deferred maintenance. I mean, our, our sidewalks are pretty bad. I mean, seriously, really bad. And, and, and as you know, probably, I mean, we've all been to the Fine Arts Building, and it's, it's not all that nice compared to what it should be. And thank you for helping us get the walls, and, you know, and now the flooring and some of these things. And I know that Chris is looking at, others are looking at, maybe even the seating. If you've ever sat in some of those chairs in the, in the Fine Arts Building, I mean, you drop all the way down. And so these are the kinds of things we're trying, we're trying to fix some of. Our sidewalks don't look like they should, and so there's some, you know, problems there. So we're trying to do some things that, probably the deferred maintenance, you know, it's, it's nice to build a brand-new building, it really is, and it looks nice. But part of it is, is you've got to continue, just like, you know, your washing machine or your dryer, you know, they break down, and you've got to fix them.
And air conditioning.
That little theater's a nice spot for you, right? The chairs, when you're sitting those, your knees are on your chin, so. Especially if you're a tall person.
We're fortunate that the, the roofs of the, of the buildings are in good shape. Some of the roads could use some work, but we, you know, I think probably the top priority in the board, of course, director, otherwise, but the top priority is getting the old gym prepared to be used, and we're gonna try to get that done this year.
Our prayer dogs are eating our asphalt right now.
Really?
These are serious ones.
They are serious.
They are.
I believe you.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, what do you need from us now?
Oh, no, we'll just keep going around. If you're done with your questions, Dan. We want trustee Ramsay, or do you have any questions about the budget?
No, and I apologize for being late. We, we had a wonderful work session yesterday, spent two hours going over all of this, so our, our questions were answered yesterday.
Trustee Hampton.
Same answer. We did a lot of this yesterday in the work session. We had questions that I haven't answered. And I feel very sympathetic with Dr. Form's being assignment. He really did a nice job, and thank you for working down on this.
Well, I'm, I'm curious as to where Johnson County got their numbers, I'm really.
To help Johnson County is what it is.
They don't need it.
Well, it's amazing how that part of, that part of the state doesn't really help this part of the state, so.
But I, I'm, I think that it has to be, if it isn't, it's hard.
That's a good question. I mean, you know, if I, and if all of the colleges aren't required to participate, hey, I can develop our own data and go back several years and say, "Okay, here's what I think our cost per student is, using unrestricted, currently restricted funds." I'm pretty comfortable with the FTE. I mean, that's, seems pretty, you know, there's not any big wild swings. Whenever you see wild swings like that, that just raises red flags.
Trustee Corbly.
I don't have any questions either.
Thank you. I, I will say on the same, on, you know, on that note, Dr. Forie, I think, you know, when you go back up to that first statement page, which, again, I think is everybody recognizes, when the first page falls into question, then you just really got to question the whole thing. I mean, all the percentages calculated, that's a spreadsheet problem. I mean, they didn't recalculate the percentages, they're the same as the twenty-sixteen, seventeen, so they obviously just, their system just didn't recalculate it, so they didn't redo the spreadsheet.
You might recall, I did not present this information in July.
Yeah.
That this was one of the reasons.
And then when you go and look, and from accounting, and, and this is way beyond my pay grade, I understand, I'm just a medical doctor, I do not understand accounting, so. But when you go in and you look, and the question Dan raised about the federal funds in the four-ten to four-nineteen, and it's a five million dollar increase, you know, although in comparison, but then you go down to expenditures, and they also have a five million dollar increase in our scholarships. And so I think it's, my presumption, again, would be is that this is some sort of accounting issue, or they, they decided to start earmarking, "Well, we're gonna put this here and this here, and this is how it's balanced," because, I mean, that's the difference, as I see. Again, you gotta have to totally ignore the percentages, because they're, those are just nothing but a typo from the last year, so that's worthless, but, um, so, again, looking at these things, it's, it's sad that this is the report, and yeah, I, I wish you the best, and hopefully getting us some better answers or better data next year. Hopefully, our new system will help that situation too. I understand our reporting's probably not been the best either, so. But I have no other questions in regards to the budget, which would then bring us into our, gives Dr. Nolte his opportunity, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Glenn, and the others, for helping putting this together, and, and we do appreciate that.
I do, again, want to point out that we're, we're going down a little bit on our rate. Total rate's going down.
Yeah, well, you saved, what, a million dollars this year? We went from about five percent.
Yeah, pretty close to that, I think, yeah.
So our ratios for HLC is gonna look really, really good.
Yeah, our debt's gone down, and our cash, you know, our income's gone up, so our surplus has gone up, so that should reflect positively on our composite financial indicator.
And Christie will be helping us, whereas Christie's gonna be giving her report, but, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to become more efficient, but much more efficient, and, and, and put programs in in need. I mean, I just, USD talked to me about, you know, the superintendent talked to me about HVAC, you know, there's a real need for industrial HVAC and things like that, so these are some of the programs we probably need to start looking at, those kind of programs.
And we're showing electricians.
Electricians and plumbers, you know, but it's, it's wonderful that the USD has been, you know, we were, we put in the CBL program, which we're probably talking a little bit about too, and, and, not CBL, the, uh.
CNA.
That's CNA.
CBL.
CNA, I'm sorry. Walked away, Marsha. We put, and, and, and we were, we were gonna have to, we were gonna have to bust the students around, the high school students around, and the USD said, "Don't worry about it, we'll take care of it." And that's the kind of partnerships we, we need to have.
I'm gonna give you this, 'cause you know it's gonna come anyway, but if we would, the six hundred thousand a year we're spending in Arizona, if we would bring that home, we could build a building and have electrical, plumbing, and HVAC right here next year.
We can't build a building for six hundred thousand, but we can do something, maybe, but you can't build a building for six hundred thousand a year, so.
We're work, we're working on helping the state resolve itself, and it's resolving itself.
I think we could just, I think we could do more. You know, we could have those programs here for local kids, rather than trying to do what we're doing in Phoenix. I just don't think it's, it's just not wise.
Well, I, you know, and I, I understand that, and, I mean, we need to talk to Fort Hayes about their Chinese program, then. You know, they have a lot of students over in China doing their, their program over there.
More than on campus.
So, on to the public comment section of the board, of the, uh, public hearing. If there's anyone that has public comments, please welcome this opportunity to have you come up to the mic. Please state your name, your address, for the record, and feel free to share your thoughts. Giving ample time for nobody to jump up, okay? Any further discussion from the board?
Well, I'm happy that we've made progress with our total picture financially, and I think we're on the way to more of that kind of reports. So I have really appreciated this report.
I'd echo the same, for Sheena. I think it's been excellent. I'm really glad to hear that we're doing our due diligence to start offsetting our, our debt-to-revenue burdens, and that's the key, um, from the HLC standpoint, and from fiscal responsibilities, so. I, I welcome this, and welcome to see the same in the future, and glad that we're doing it without raising our taxes anymore, so. So if no other comments from the board, I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the fiscal year twenty budget as presented per Dr. Forie.
So moved.
Motion. Motion second. Motion Corbly. Second, Reckon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Uh, that completes our public hearing for the fiscal year twenty budget, and that meeting is adjourned. We'll now move into our regular annual board meeting. We'll call that meeting to order, and with that, if everybody would rise, and we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, and no doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we'll read the Dot City Community College mission statement. Dot City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning, and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. We welcome this opportunity, again, this being for the regular board meeting. If there's any comments from the audience, same rules apply. Please come up to the mic, state your name and your address for the record. And again, still seeing no one jumping at the chance. Um, we move into the approval of the board minutes. This is special board meeting, July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. The regular board meeting of July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
I move.
Motion, thank you.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. The completion of the agenda, all of us have the updated agenda before us. The additions would be action item F. Uh, revisions to the consent agenda would be the addition of personnel item number three, personnel item number four, the addition of the Student Support Services Director, and the addition of the Professor of Computer Science's resignation. Any changes, alterations, recommendations, otherwise? Or tonight's agenda? Not a motion for approval?
I move approval of the agenda with revisions.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Uh, trustees' reports. We'll go back around the other way this time. Trustee Reckon more on the spot, trustee Hampton, who'd you like to start?
Well, I've already said that I'm so pleased with the financial reports, and thank you to Dr. Forie for that. Also want to say that, excuse me, the parade that Henry and Dr. Ginnett did together, they planned the way to do it, was, I think, a real success for Dot City Community College. And I had family here from Florida who were just overwhelmed at what Dot City's doing. And a little guy who is five, who sat on the floating with his eyes this big as a football player, he was in stardom, and it was really fun to see how impressed he was. And they were very nice football players, too. They, Jerry Curbs, I don't know if they're nice on the football field, but they were.
That's not their job. Amen to that.
So thank you for all that hard work.
Thank you. Trustee Corbly.
I attended a, a community assessment as a trustee for Bright Beginnings last week, and that was very interesting. Did a community-wide assessment of the needs for their Bright Beginnings grant. It's a five-year federal grant, and they invited me to come and represent the college, and I did so, and enjoyed that very much. Very interesting.
Thank you. Trustee Ramsay.
Well, I, I have to say, I love getting your reports, all of you, and what every, what all is going on, and kudos to what all each department has been doing. And yesterday, we discussed that about, I like the booth for the teen night. I like it when we're out there with the public. I think that's where we need to be. We've got a lot of records coming in, what was it, almost fifteen hundred or so? Mental health module for the college orientation class, which I hope Benny Bethia is doing, because she does such a nice job on that. I like the flow chart that they put forward on the, on the counseling. And I wanted to say thank you to our attorney, Mr. Curbs, because going through the nursing and all of those documents that you do, thank you so much, because I went through, and you looked for everything, and I appreciate that. Can I go?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Trustee Reckon.
I think all of you know that I sponsor a group of girls that does community service work, and we were in the park Sunday, and here were a large number of young men dressed in purple and gold, who were carrying tables for every event to help set up. "Can we help you?" came over, "Can we help you do something? Do you need anything?" Later on, I had my barrel trained down there, pumpkin trained down there. Those guys fill those pumpkin bags. You saw. Some of the coaches were down there. I tell you, those guys, I thought, "There's no way he's gonna get out of there," but that got them.
The rattle.
And, uh, so, had a good day down there, and they were extremely helpful for every organization that was down there. I was really, really proud of them, and they just really put themselves out for everybody in the park that day. And they had about thirteen hundred kids in the park that day for, for Kid Fest on Sunday. They dealt with a lot of kids, and those kids were having a great time with those college boys, they really were.
Thank you. I echo a lot of the same sentence. We've had some just unbelievable, great things and, and comments from the public, recognizing our students and recognizing the college. I just hope that that continues. It's really exciting that that's happening in July, when we don't really have all the students here, and it's not really even school yet. So I'm really excited to see what comes of school, is we get everybody back. This is always a, I always enjoy this time of the year, because it's, now we're getting back, it's college, it's time. Now that everybody's getting back and getting fired up, it's great to see the, the young athletes here already ahead of time. So we look forward to more of that. Echo the comments in regards to the reports, and, um, the foundation and reporter, and I apologize for not reporting on this last month, although that was just a couple of weeks ago. The foundation and Chris is doing a phenomenal job, and that's really what I just want to comment. I, I hope everybody's read that report, the, the work that the foundation's done, the growth that has happened just in the, in my brief tenure on the board is unbelievable, where, where we were and where we are now, and the, it's absolutely hope for the future. It's not just hope for the future, it's already there, it's happening, so I, I can't thank her enough and the foundation for doing that, so. Dr. Nolte, sir.
Thank you. Uh, as you know, today in the newspaper, there was, Scott, thank you for writing an article. There was an article in the newspaper about Dr. Burke, and it was long, too bad it wasn't on the front page. That's all, that's all I want to say there, but it was a very good article, well done, well written, well, well, well put together. So I really do, uh, he, he was a wonderful man, and did a great job for the college, was here for ten years, so. Just echo that, and, um, we, thank you for that article, and I'm glad to put it in the newspaper. Last year at this time, interestingly enough, I was, I'm going back and writing my, my speech for, for, in service next Monday, and I'm looking back through the notes, and it was all about, um, some, it was all about the HLC, you know, and, and our ratios and things like that, and so I think we've come, we've come a long way. And obviously, we're putting money back in, in the coffers, and that's, that's a good thing, so. Things are, things are going well, lots of, lots of good things are happening. It's, it's gonna be a good year. You can already tell it's gonna be a good year. And, uh, you know, it's always nice to have the athletes here, as well as other students, and people are coming in happy, you know, but we, we're on the bottom floor, so we can see that. And so I'm, I'm excited about seeing the students. It's kind of, summertime's just kind of boring a little bit, you know, when you don't have students coming in, and so I'm glad that they're coming in. Speaking of that, Bev, do you want to talk about the final, the final registration a little bit, real quick?
Thank you, President Nolte. I'd love to do that. As is already mentioned, we have a number of student athletes that are already here. All of football has checked in, all of women's volleyball has checked in, and then we have men's and women's soccer. And so we have a hundred and fifty-two student athletes that are already in the halls. And then beginning this Sunday, on the eleventh, all of student affairs, the business office, and the bookstore will be open. And the residence halls for all the rest of the students will open at nine AM. If you look on the back of this card, this postcard, this was mailed out to about eleven hundred students, and then we had to print some more, and I want to thank Jos- And I want to thank Justin, Justin over in marketing, for taking care of these at the last minute and providing us some more. We had, you see on Sunday, August 11th, we open at nine AM, and we're open all day long on Sunday, and we find a lot of community members, and then a lot of students that arrive for the residence halls will come over and finalize enrollment that day, and they will get their class schedules, they'll get their books, and they'll make their financial arrangements over at the business office. We re-stage everybody into the student union, so that the students don't have to run all over. So, in other words, the business office comes over here in the corral, and then we have the bookstore open upstairs, so they can complete in this building. If you look at the next two days, on the twelfth and the thirteenth, we have extended hours, and that's for the local community members, so that if they get off work at five, they can still come out here and enroll that last hour. And then, if they're still coming through the doors at six, we stay open as long as we need to. So, we're hopeful that we will have a real enrollment surge. We're getting a lot of interest in the last few days, and then when we come to the September board meeting, which is a long ways from now, because it's all the way in, end of the month, we'll give you the final enrollment statistics and the categories like we do each year. But we're really putting the foot down on the gas, trying to move enrollment forward. So, if any of you would like to come and observe any of these, you're welcome. And then, look at the big day, August fourteenth. There's nothing better than watching college students go to class for the first day and look at life through their eyes. They're so excited, and I think that's why we all work here, just to look at life through their eyes and see what they look like on the first day. It's fun to watch them. So, you're welcome. Any questions over? Final registration, enrollment, check-in, residence halls.
Really appreciate that you're getting them into one place to get all that.
Right.
That's easy.
Right, and that takes a lot of restaging from the business office staff, and we really appreciate that they do that.
And we've asked, we have some ASME tents that are gonna go up in year and those two day, year and those two days.
Oh, yes. You want to talk about that?
Like Lyndon Tharp wrote that, that was just kind of great.
Well, this is something, we're strategically placing these tents near the parking lots where the students of the park and campus, and it's to help them, if they don't know where to go, or if they have questions about what they need to do, or things like that. So, we'll have people at those booths helping direct them to the appropriate place or answer their questions.
Giving out water.
And we'll have some bottled water, if it's gonna be hot, probably.
That's very important. And, you know, it's amazing what Christie and, Christie especially, with everybody else, it's amazing how many people we've hired this year. And I'm really impressed, and numbers may be better than that, but our diversity numbers are really up. We're eighteen percent in diversity from last year to this year in our numbers, and so that excites me, because, you know, it's all about students, we want them to be mentored. And it's always better to mentor if they see people like themselves. And so, I think it's very, very important that we do that, and I think it's a, it's a compliment to the staff and that we're doing these kind of things. And it's exciting, it's gonna be exciting to see some of these people coming from other places, and we're getting them from everywhere. I mean, you know, we had one today we hired, just today, from Salt Lake City, you know, and so it's just, it's amazing, we're getting them from all over the country, and it, which adds to the population, because part of it is, is they want to come here and to this institution and see diversity and see what's going on, and so I'm really excited about that. And, you know, by the way, Don Webb was in, for y'all, one of our board members was in the hospital the other day, was in for, in the ICU, and I went by to see him, and we had one of our football coaches in there, brand-new football coach in there, checking on one of our students, and was very concerned about one of our students, and so it's important that we take care of our students, and that's what we're all about, taking care of students.
And I talked to a student this morning, and she is so ready and so anxious for school to start, and she's, she was hoping it'd start now, basically.
Play a couple of this, girl. Well, we're excited she's coming here, that's what, and that's what it's about. We want to make sure that we, you know, we recruit, we educate, and we graduate, and we retain, and the best way to retain is making sure that we're a friendly campus.
Ms. Chairman, I feel, mentioned two other connections to the community that is really interesting, and I think Andrea and I were at the rodeo on Friday night, we were to host the dinner that they served to the sponsors for the rodeo, and these are people from the area. We had on our Dot City Community College t-shirts, and they were aware that we were representing Dot City Community College, and I felt the atmosphere was very receptive, so I was proud of that. And the other one is that the arts and crafts show that was just in the mall was hosted by RSVP that we sponsored, and so those are things that we need to celebrate.
Louis is on Facebook. With the table. We're gonna work on getting bigger, bigger signs, too, by the way, okay? Can that be in the budget, sir?
Louis is everywhere.
This is right here, even.
Yeah, right.
So, thank you, Dr. Nolte.
Thank you.
Moving on to Director Olschberger's report, human resources.
Good evening, all. Before I start with the report, like Dr. Nolte said, we've been hiring a lot this summer, so I just wanted to say thank you for your understanding with the additions this month. I know it's been a lot. If you realize, we don't have our next board meeting coming into September, so between now and then, basically, we wouldn't be able to hire anybody until October one, so we didn't want those people to go without those positions, so I appreciate that. I know it's a inconvenience, especially to Carly, I bring Carly some chocolate every once in a while, I drive a little bit, but it's not due to procrastination, we just wanted to make sure we get those positions in. So, trustee Malone had sent a request, kind of asking about a breakdown of salaries over the past several years and kind of position-wise what's been going on. I know that Dr. Forte has provided some numbers, and kind of like Dr. Press was talking about earlier, obviously, depending on how you report your numbers and what you're really looking at, might come up with some different results. So, I worked really closely with IT, and actually, my co-chair gets a lot of credit for this report, and IT, but so if you look at the one sheet of paper that says full salaries based on fiscal year W-2 totals, so this is the last five years of how much was reported on W-2, so this, you know, you could pull numbers looking at gross income, net income, you could include benefits, and some of these numbers are not. And so, some of the reports that you get from the general ledger that Dr. Forte presents, they do include the extra added benefits. So, this is no benefits, this is pure salary before on W-2, so if you'll notice, from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, we're actually down over two million dollars that we have reduced, moved to different position, outsourced, things like that. So, this report kind of showed that that way, but in case you have questions, benefits, as you guys know, in regards to health benefits and things, those have all stayed the same over the last ten years. We haven't had any increases in premiums to D40 or anything like that, so, does anybody kind of have questions on that?
You'll get a copy of all this to trustee Malone's.
I sure will.
Sure, because I'm sure he's gonna be ecstatic to see this. This is better than he was even requesting back at the time, a year or so ago, so he should be very pleased to see it.
Well, good, well, I can't differ that I just put the idea together in this mic and paste a paper, which is really hard to do this from the system. So, but yes, I have copies for trustee Olschberger and trustee Malone. So, then the next packet I included with you, and I apologize for the size of font, I printed on as big a paper as I could find and tried to get it all to fit. So, some of this is a little rough, because some of this information, so this is from a document that we keep in HR that is completely by hand, and so with the changes in personnel over the last couple of years, you'll notice, you know, title changes or categorizing changes, so some of the positions are a little off, so you'll kind of bear with me. I know that the seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen are pretty spot-on, the other ones are a little bit different. But so you'll notice the first category is the administration, so you can tell over the last five years that we have decreased our administrative staff almost by half. If you look at fifteen, sixteen to today, our administrative staff has been cut almost in half, so it's like kings, vice presidents, presidents, things like that, obviously a lot of title changes. Then if you go kind of to the next one, is then our full-time faculty. So, you'll see that there was kind of a downward slope for a little while, but this last year, due to a lot of effort with Dr. Warda and the division chairs, we have increased our full-time faculty. So, you've seen the nationwide trend, the nationwide trend is actually lowering in full-time faculty and increasing in adjuncts, we're actually the reverse of that right now. I did pull some adjunct numbers, but I, they were really funky and they did not look accurate, so I didn't provide those ones. But a lot of it has to do, obviously, with the fluctuations in our flight program and things like that, so the adjunct numbers might vary. But, full-time faculty is up, and we actually added some more positions this year as well. Then moving on to program tech, same thing, you can tell where we reduced staff from last year, last fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen. Again, there were some title reconfigurations, we've combined a lot of positions. Most of the program tech positions, if they were listed the year before, they are, reductions, we completely eliminated them. Some of them we have proposed to bring back next year, so we have, like, for example, we have a third admissions representative position open right now that was eliminated last fiscal year, but we've decided to add back in for a moment, please, so those types of positions will change for the nineteen, twenty school year. And then, coaches have fluctuated, I think that's just kind of normal. Right now, we're down a little bit, but it has fluctuated, you've seen, we've kind of varied with, you know, assistant baseball slash dorm position, assistant football slash dorm position, and those have come and gone. And even, we used to have a combined women's and men's soccer, those are the, we've obviously separated those out for title line compliance, make sure there's people personally, so that was a few years back. And then, on classified staff, so the classified one is probably the most, probably the most room for error on the classified staff hourly. The biggest thing to point out is I did pull a part-time report, but basically, the reduction in eighteen, nineteen was we moved most of those positions to part-time and/or outsourced them, so that's like our night custodians, and now we have service master. We've taken full-time building secretary positions, and we've moved them to part-time, same with some of our other positions around campus. So, this is as factual as the best of my ability from our report that we keep, and so just to kind of show you guys the ways that we transitioned the positions, how much staff reduction we did do this previous year when we were working about cutting, and then you can see it in the, I mean, it's straight from the W-2s report that we did see kind of a reduction in salaries. So, what questions can I ask?
Do you have, would you be able to give the salaries, the totals for administration for those years, like you did for the fat before? I guess it's, it's total salaries, but it's not separated out, right?
No, this is just total, by, the only thing that's separated out is you'll see that there's the fiscal year subtotal, and then trustee Malone's particular request was grants removed, so the, so where it says grants, that's how much was in grants, and so that last number where it says fiscal year total, that's how much we spent that is not grants associated funding.
Okay. I'd like, if it's not too difficult, I'd like to see how much we spent in each one of these years on administration, then how much we spent each of those years on faculty, and how much we spent each of those years on staff. You know, I mean, a total for each year, you know, I don't know if the same thing applies here as applies to USDs, but USDs, everyone's salary is public information.
Yes, as are our public records.
Same here. Yeah, well, don't need that, but as a whole, I'd like to see, are we spending approximately the same amount, are we spending a lot less? We have less administrators, are we spending less on administration? And if we have about the same number of teachers, or more, are we spending a little more on faculty?
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
You know, I'd like to know those figures, you know, if it's not just a ton of trouble.
Yeah, I'll get with my, I think that there's a way how we sub-categorize them in the AES four hundred, where we categorize them by admin, faculty, adjuncts, classifieds, so on. Let me see if there's kind of an easy fix, otherwise, I could, I could for sure do like program tech, faculty and admin very easy, just kind of by hand.
That'd be great. Thank you.
But just like, for example, on your nursing, we almost, because we want to be competitive with our nursing program, and I think we've got the finest nurses in the state, and I mean that sincerely, nurse educators, and we have a phenomenal director that now has a doctor, has a doctor, by the way, but I, we doubled their, we almost doubled their salaries, but needed to. I mean, you know, we were paying nurses, our nurse educators, like thirty-six thousand, that's embarrassing, that is totally embarrassing. So, you know, I mean, part of it is, is, and we need to be paying some of our, you know, our others, especially programs like our, you know, like diesel mechanics, things like that, there's opportunity for us to grow those programs, but we need to be competitive, too.
I think we do, too, because I don't think we can be at the bottom of the barrel and attract the best people here. I think we have to, you know, be the top of the barrel.
I, you know, my thing is, is as people come in, especially faculty, I want to be competitive, I'd like to be competitive, you know, and so, I mean, we're getting some, it's amazing what Jane and Christie are bringing in, and these people are from all over the country, and as well as here, and we just, it would be nice to be able to really compete with, you know, some other schools in Western Kansas, and I think we can and will.
I think it's amazing coming in and finding your doctor already employed.
I think you'll find with the nationwide trend how hard it is to find full-time faculty positions right now, especially in, Jane and I, and Dr. Forte and I have been really learning about it, but especially in really non-roll areas, so California's, Florida's, those types of areas, it's just adjuncts. It's mostly all adjuncts.
They don't have full-time positions, or you're, or you're having a hard time finding a full-time person?
No, they, applicants are coming to us because it's so hard for them to find a full-time position. We hired several people who have adjuncted at several locations or several different colleges, just to make a full-time load, and then they do that, so then the schools then don't have to pay benefits because they're adjuncts.
Lots of colleges are doing the reverse, they're hiring a lot of, they're hiring a lot of adjuncts because, so they don't have to pay benefits, and.
Well, I'm sorry.
And so, right now, we're reverse.
You hire somebody full-time, they have got a commitment here, and if they're an adjunct, I'm not saying anything bad about adjuncts, but if you hire a full-time person, they've got a commitment to the college, and they're gonna want to do, make this the best place to compete.
And that's what we found. Yeah, you're exactly right, that's what we're finding.
They want to, they want to contribute to the community, and that's important, and be involved in the community, so that's, that's very important. But you got, we're finding lots of them, like, we had one that, our instructor for our doctorate in science or biology, she had four different jobs, you know, I mean, how can you do four different jobs?
Well, if you invest in the person, that person will invest back in your, your organization and your commitment. You have to make an investment first. Person can't be out here struggling to survive and expect to give anything back, you know, on a daily basis.
I agree totally.
Our fringe benefit package with just the health insurance alone is phenomenal.
So, that's actually a really great point, because I, we have comparisons, there's tons of market surveys, I can see how we compare salary rise to garden, cool, things like that. Garden most definitely has a little bit of their salaries, they beat us in that category from coaches to administrative assistants all the way across. But when you add in their fringe benefits, you actually make more money by coming here. And so, it just kind of, it just, every school is a little bit different, there's benefits, but one thing our board does a really good job of is our benefits by allowing us to continue to be self-funded and have our bucket for our health benefits and have that opportunity to bin rather than cost us employees. So, we do have that absolutely great retirement benefits and some other benefits that.
Plus, don't embarrass ourselves again this year by not giving our faculty something.
Director Olschberger? I really appreciate you bringing your report. I really got to thank the, you know, the entire staff for the due diligence that it takes to make this kind of cut. I mean, this is astronomical, you don't make these changes and then still have a progressive college going forward, so we thank you all, so. Out of respect for you, though, and your time, and this is a very busy time of the year, as you already alluded, we really appreciate these reports, maybe you can give us a good insight as to a better time of the year for you to provide these to us, not nearing your busiest time of the year. It's great, and the board needs this information, it's useful information, but we're putting a lot of burden when we ask a lot of these questions, and we understand it's easy for us to sit here and ask you to come up with this and come up with this, but that's, you have a job you've got to be doing, too, and although these are important for the business of the college, they're not, they don't make or break what happens at the college tomorrow, but having faculty on staff and having people hired in time is important. So, if you could give us some recommendation or your, what's your timing of the year, because I don't know what your schedule is, and maybe June's a better time than, right before school, so. Going forward, bringing those reports, you know, maybe you can put that on your agenda to, or, you know, your calendar to bring those things at a more convenient time of the year for yourself, so that we're not burdening you extra.
I'm glad you still have our, by the way.
Yeah, exactly. And because these are also better times of the year possibly for us as a board to pursue some of this stuff, you know, usually our agendas are a little lighter in the summer months, and so. You know, usually our agendas are a little lighter in the summer months, and so opens more time for discussions.
Absolutely.
So I'd welcome the insight into that. Or the current, or the chair, the real chair, not me.
But our goal is to be more efficient, and, you know, and see what people, in all our programs, all our things.
I have stuff away real quickly. You guys can keep meeting or adjourn, or whatever you want to do for a second, but I'll be back.
No questions?
No, thank you very much, Dr. Olti. I really appreciate it, so I do.
No problem.
I want to make a general comment.
Good. Yeah, I know what he was going to say, oh, darn.
About bringing people into our community.
Yeah.
It always makes me feel bad when I hear somebody say, somebody wants to become a good officer. There are people that want to. They want to live in a smaller community, and I hate it when we run ourselves down before we give them a ticket.
Yeah.
So please tell them how wonderful you are.
We have, we have a gentleman that grew up in Compton, LA. Today, we hired, he's on, he's on this list. And with his last job, he's been, he's been, he has his doctorate, and he, his last job was in Salt Lake City, a little bit bigger town than here. But he is, he's happy about being, matter of fact, the fun part of his story, I guess, I guess Ben and others, is, is he's, he's teaching his wife how to drive, because she's using, she's using, she uses the metro all the time. And so, and she's, so he says, she got her first parking ticket, so, you know, because she, and she didn't know what that was, she goes, I got a parking ticket. And he goes, well, we'll have to pay that. So it was, but it's interesting, but, you know, but we're hiring people that, from all over the country, so it's.
I want us to get into habits here of treating our instructors, our faculty well. I, you know, I've been here a long time, and I know, and so it's not a, it's not just a now problem, but I know the really good faculty that have walked away from this institution because they were not being treated well. And, you know, goes back years. And so I think we really need to make an effort to work on treating people well.
Everybody.
Yeah. Make sure that they're appreciated, and we appreciate what they're doing.
Well, you look, you look on, if you go outside and look on that wall of, you know, of Harshberger and Burke and all those guys that we're here for, you know, you come to the Hall of Fame activities, and it's amazing how, how well-respected they were and how well they did, and how well people thought of them. That's what we want to get back to, and whether it be faculty, staff, or even, and amen, student, too. You know, we want to make sure our students feel good. We want to make sure they feel good when they come here. And a perfect example, we, you know, we had that conversation, but Gary Patterson was talking about how wonderful it was here, his two years here, and we thought we were going to have a, Chris and I thought, Greg Goff thought we were going to have a thirty-minute meeting, and it was three and a half hours later, and he walked us out of the car. So that's the kind of, that's the kind of things we want people to go away feeling good about here. To me, graduation, you know, first day of school and last day of school are always the best parts. So we will, we will work on that. And part of, part of it is, we, you know, Glenn and I are realizing, our system is so old, we have to do things like people enroll here and then have to come back and re-enroll or whatever. It's just an archaic system that we've had, you know, and we're, we'll fix that, because it should be a one-stop shop. In other words, you should be able to enroll, and you should be able to enroll online and do some things like that. So we'll, we'll get to the modern efficiencies pretty quickly. So thank you for asking.
One of my young women came out the other day, and she's enrolling in the nurses program.
Good.
So she's excited. She's also, she's also scared, nervous. She's, I'm nervous. So I said, you're going to do fine. She's been a CNA for years, you know. We encouraged her to go back and get her degree and come up here, so.
Well, you know, they, you had a waiting list this year, didn't you?
We did. Ten students.
One student didn't understand, three years ago she got in, and then she had to, she had, it's not complicated, she had, for some reason or other, she couldn't make it, so she had to drop out, and she complied again this year, couldn't make it, couldn't understand. Well, three years ago, I made it. Well, your caliber of students are really, and now with the CNA program, CNA program, got it right there. A CNA program, it's a high school, I think we're really going to do some really good things. It's going to be impressive.
Our courtesy cart arrived just in time to take the lieutenant governor on a tour tomorrow.
He's coming tomorrow morning at eight-thirty.
Make sure somebody plugs their hand.
I've warned them twice. Not warned.
Requested.
Requested.
Is it plugged in?
It's been taken care of.
I knew you'd know.
Got the decals on it yet?
It's been taken care of.
The right decals?
Up to that end.
Oh, man, I was supposed to put the red demon on it?
It's got the red ones on.
We're working on the sign, right? Do we want to cut off for a while?
Doctor Olti and I are meeting with the ministerial alliance next Wednesday to promote our conquistador companion program.
Very good.
Another program to help improve retention, good success.
We could do that. You want to do, let's do recess.
Do we have to move to recess?
No.
Where you can serve. The secretary serves in the absence of the president.
I can go through this.
Go ahead and get your signatures on that.
Get him back. Whoa. Good job. Let's call this meeting back to order. Doctor Presley might be out a little bit longer, so we'll go ahead and start with the board action items. Let's start with the Department of Nursing Education Student Handbook.
Good evening. First, I want to say, Glenn, thank you very much for looking over this every year. I know it's a big document.
You're welcome.
You do a really good job of catching our mistakes as well, so.
Thank you.
Well, it's a good job for you, too.
Yes.
Go through it every spring.
And your department does do a nice job of going through it every year, which is good.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think it was never going to happen, but.
By the way, are there, are there other doctors of nursing in the area?
Uh, there's a few in the state of the associate degree level. There's a little over a handful, I think.
There's only one good one.
So every year, as you know, we revise our student handbook. A lot of these, the revisions come by, sometimes things that come up every year, but this year was actually a light year. We didn't have a whole lot of changes, but the changes we did make were in the student's interest, of course. There was some confusion about student contracts, because our contracts are not meant to be repeated, they're just a, here's our resources, we expect you to use those, and we're here to help you. They were kind of confusing how we had them, and so we kind of universalized that, and we also included just a formal remediation plan that doesn't have the word contract on it. It's just basically, we see you struggling in this one area, we need you to get some help with that. That's one of the biggest changes we had this year, but other than that, do you have any questions?
Do you have a lot of political, I notice there's an area in here that talks about political views or, so when administration and government changes, do you have to rewrite a lot of policies?
Not usually, but just because of some, sometimes recent history, we just kind of are trying to keep it, we're trying to remain as neutral as we can.
Okay.
Because nurses, regardless of what's happening around us, we have patients to take care of, and so that's the professional image that we're trying to portray.
Can I have a motion, please?
I was going to ask, Glenn, Glenn, it's our definition of quorum, a majority.
Right.
Okay.
Right. We got a quorum. Motion to.
I will accept this.
Any discussion?
Can you second?
He made it, you second.
Got it. Any discussion? All those opposed say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? If you care. Thank you, Michelle.
Doctor Olti, if I may, I mentioned in the work session that while Dr. Aythie was here reporting this evening, if you'd be okay if they took a few minutes and spoke a little bit about CNA, some of the exciting things took place. We also imparted.
Is Marcia going to help us, too?
Yes.
Thank you.
So they'd like to speak a little bit about Buckland Dot City Center. It's all yours.
Hey. Good evening, and thank you guys very much for letting me share this exciting news. We, and I also want to say thank you for your support and the work we're doing with Dot City High School, because without your help, we couldn't furnish the lab and the classroom over there, and so we, we appreciate that. We have hired a new instructor, a Sunshine Hicks, and yesterday we had Sunshine over to the high school, and we looked things over, and things are getting set up, the lab is getting set up, and she's very excited and ready to go. We're going to offer three classes. One will be first block, the next one's going to be third block, and then fifth block. And those will start on the twentieth. It looks like, we have been told, we have thirty applicants in TJ's office, and so, because I was checking with him on that today, and he said there are a few that have not completed that enrollment process yet, but the high school's enrolling on Thursday, if I understand it, and so he feels like that's when those kids will get in and get that all completed. And so, you know, we, gosh, you guys, it's exciting just to go in there and look at it, because we're duplicating a lab that we have here, you know, and we've got three beds over there and all the personnel you need to teach these CNAs. And so we're all just probably pretty ecstatic about it and anxious to see how it all goes. I did want to let you know, too, that we have, as of this afternoon, I think TJ texted me about four o'clock, because all but one of our classes had made, and then he texts me at four o'clock, he said, well, we're hybrid classes in Oltmore, and that made it make two. So all of our classes have made, it looks like. My Buckland class that I'm going to be teaching online is, they say they have ten students, we're awaiting that paper work, too. So, and ten students for the CNAs is a complete class, because the state will only allow us to teach ten students per instructor. My CMAs, however, the state said six students per instructor, so I was allowed to bump kids in, and that way I can do two clinical sets with them. I can have as many classrooms as I want, but only six at a clinical session, so I do two clinical sessions with those. And so we are, you know, we're excited. I think probably the most exciting thing is that many of our CNA and CMA students are really looking to go into the healthcare field, and so I think that's just so positive for us out here in Little America. So, I think I have any questions? Yeah.
Marcia has done an amazing job in the last several weeks and over the last month helping us pull all of this together.
So I want to say thank you. We were worried about getting our courses approved and stuff, and got that done with the help of the state, and I talked to town administration, and she kind of pushed things through for us.
Now, are we saying there are thirty students in the high school and ten in Buckland?
We believe there are thirty at the high school and ten more in Buckland, and then, of course, we have another hybrid class that is made, and then I believe all of our basic base classes have made two.
There's actually forty at the high school.
Yeah.
We have one on campus that is a high school.
Yeah. Lois teaches like here.
That's the professions we need to be getting into. You know, obviously nursing is very, very important here, but other, other, other areas like, you know, all of us that have gone to other things like, you know, physical therapy and things like that, we're looking at some of those.
Yes, I agree, Dr. Olti. Clavotomy, we've talked about clavotomy classes, and I feel like there are some areas out there that we could really expand on, and, you know, that we need to grow our own, maybe.
And they need to quit going to Wichita and Kansas City.
Where are all our students from?
Um, well, the, you know, of course, the high school students are asking for our classes. I just actually visited with one from Ashland, a lady from Ashland today, that asked me if a senior in high school could take her MA class, and I said, absolutely, she can, she has her CNA, and it's current. And so I have students, in fact, I have another one from Ashland that I visited with this morning on email, and so I've got, we've got Searville students, of course, the Buckland students, and I don't know if you realize, but in the spring, I had taught a class at Jevore as well, and we have my summer classes, I had just gone all over Kinsley. So we get, we get a lot of area units.
And it will feed into the MA classes.
Yes.
And hopefully the nursing classes will.
And adoids, are they all high school-based?
No, actually, probably in, if the class isn't designated for the high school, like these four obviously were, and of course, the Buckland class is a high school class. I get probably in a class, I get a couple of high school students, but most of the, the rest of them have graduated, and many of them have been out of school for a little while. They have the nurse aid, they get, they get about careers, whatever I do, and so then they all come back, take their medication aid, see if that's where they would stop. And medication aid is to help my students with the pharmacology and nursing, and so I don't know. We appreciate that.
Well.
Yeah. So we're all excited over the nursing department, I mean.
Any questions, any other questions?
No, I'd like to make a comment, because I've gone to your graduation, and the rapport and the bond you build with your students. You can see on stage that they admire you. And then when you read your nursing oath, and we have our own nurse that stands up and reads it, it since chills up, you know, I mean, it is, we should be very, very proud of our college with what you guys are doing, because it's very, very good.
I just say, you just want community.
Yes, it does.
I know.
Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all very much. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Fire alarm systems testing and monitoring services.
Yes, this is a service that we have approved every year. Fire alarm specialists have been doing the testing and monitoring for the last twenty-seven years. We went out on a bid, and they were the only bid that covered all the specifications. A question was asked yesterday about the mileage. That mileage raises only if there is an emergency situation, and we did not have any emergency situation this last year. I think we did, someone said they did the year before because somebody hung something on our sprinklers.
They did.
But otherwise, the.
Close.
Yes. Otherwise, the transportation cost is included in their total contract price.
Does that have to be noted on this, an emergency?
Well, it's in the contract.
Okay.
It's in the contract.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All of the opposed say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed saying nay? Question given.
Thank you for looking that up and asking.
Hustler. Hustler mower bid proposal.
The next item is for a mower. We tend to run our mowers quite a bit with all the, the lawn and grass that we have to mow. We went out on bid for a, another mower, and the committee has recommended the Kenmack, how do you pronounce that, Justin?
Kenmack.
Kenmack, okay. Hydraulics Hustler. They think that that is the best option, that they have, have the ability to get repairs, if it breaks down, and have it repaired locally, and choosing this particular option.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same thing?
Motion carries.
This is going to be my favorite one. Patrick, a lot of conversation about how well your, how well your program's going, by the way, yesterday. It's amazing. Everybody, everybody's really loves your program, what you're doing, so congratulations. Okay, here we go. 2019 Caterpillar 2236D skid steer loader for the building construction floor.
I move approval. I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same thing? Action carries.
Well, I'm ahead of the game, I probably shouldn't say anything, but can I, if I might, just take a little.
I'd be really quiet. You introduce, introduce.
Yes, I want to introduce Pat Chu, he's our construction technology professor, I invited him here this evening in case there were any questions. There were none, thank you very much, we appreciate the approval, but Pat, if you'd like to stand up, I did mention yesterday in the, yeah, please, please let yourself be known. I did visit a little bit, make a few comments about Pat's program in the work session yesterday. Pat has done a, has been kind of the theme for this evening, which is great. Pat's doing a wonderful job as well, he's built some real synergy with the high school, which is great, we've created a real, to his credit, not we, to his credit, but the college, we have built a real pathway from the high school into his program, and then from his program, he's really worked diligently, diligently with Pittsburgh State University as well, so we've got a pathway all the way from high school through to the, to four-year completion. Over the last few years, he's really been able to engage students, increase enrollment, he's got a wonderful program going with the, with the county, through our CHAD, I believe we've got five years of projects lined up with that, so, got a wonderful house with the construction projects, and the skid loader will go a long way in helping us complete those kind of projects, and so we really appreciate your, your support.
If you, if you toured the duplexes in the spring.
Yes, I did.
I know those sold, and the house that the north is sold, has a contract.
Wow.
And we have another one in Dodge City, kind of my friends, probably needs us when we say it, so, we have five athletes, I think, this year.
Wow.
Yeah, that's good, that's, that's very.
How many students did you have?
16 sophomores, kind of terrifies me. Turning loose from nail guns and saws, it's kind of, right now, just six freshmen, but I think that number will.
Go ahead and introduce your, your.
This is Wesley Ken, Van Ken, your math instructors and sponsors, Dodge City Commission, and he's with Holy Cap. He brought in an outstanding folder, who knows his product very well, very impressive with his presentation.
I didn't know Van was your dad, I played football. So, okay.
Excellent.
You've got a great program.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We're finished, no? Okay.
Sorry, my apologies, everybody, I apologize for the delay.
You are a doctor.
Most of the time. So, item E, Dean Osmus, six 86-inch LED displays for your office?
Not quite. I appreciate that, that was good. That's clever. This is a continuation of our Title V Department of Education grant, we are entering year five of a five-year grant. I was just notified within the last week that we have received our funding for year five. Now, that can seem a little contradictory, where we're in year five of a five-year grant, but that grant really is year-to-year based on outcomes and performance, so we did get year five funding, which is obviously great news, so this is just a continuation of that. We've come several times throughout the last several years asking for approval to continue with our virtualization of our classrooms, so we're just continuing to install technology into those classrooms and using them for, for an instructional, instructional tool. This was built in, wrote into the Title V grant, excuse me, from the beginning, it has been approved and will be paid through, be paid with, be paid for with Title V funds, excuse me. Any questions?
Hearing no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Action item F, Dr. Nolte, Intergovernmental Strategic Plan Consulting Scope of Work and Project Fees.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair. I think this is real important, we talked about this yesterday in the workshop, I think we are, it's time for us to do a very thorough strategic plan. This gentleman is, was, is known for doing that. Like we talked about, a consultant is usually, what, 50 miles away?
Where's the tie in which 50 miles are perfectly?
And so I think it's real important for us to get someone out that can, that can really talk to us about how to do one and get it done right. Scott will help me along with, with the project, so I'm looking forward to, to working with, with Joe and get this thing done.
What is he, has he done this before? Is he part of a firm that does this?
He's an individual and he's excited about doing it, of course, he'll do a great job.
Where's he live?
In California.
Kind of have a hard time getting here.
Yeah. He doesn't know that, yeah, don't tell him that. Yeah, I didn't, didn't go through the specifics, but he, he is very, very good. He, this is one of his areas of expertise.
He comes out for a visit to our several times a year?
About four times, I think it's four times he comes out, and then he's supposed, he wants to have it finished, hopefully in December, if possible, but he, he will do, I know Scott's done some of the legwork for him, but he'll do, he'll go out in the community, find, talk to students and faculty and staff, and make sure that, you know, you do the SWOT analysis, he'll, he'll make sure to take care of that and, along with looking at some of our stuffs. I've, I've known this gentleman for a while, and he'll do a fabulous job, so. I look, I look forward to working with him, and, yeah, he does, no, it'll be interesting to get him, get him in California, so it'll be interesting, but he does, he does accreditation also, but he's, he's good at what he does, so.
I'm surprised that it doesn't cost more than this cost.
He gave us this.
A fan.
Yeah. He gave us, he gave us, he says it's called the family discount, so.
Come that far, four times, do the work.
It's, it's a whole lot of work.
That's, that's.
Usually he charges around 20 to 25, and I think he's at 12.
Yeah. Well, we better approve before he changes his mind. Before he gets that first pedal jump out of there.
Or misses the third.
Was that your motion?
As I said.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further discussion before he changes his mind? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Nolte, for reading that. We have no unfinished business or new business tonight, that brings us to our consent agenda, which has all been before us. Entertain a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda.
I move acceptance of the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. And that brings us to our ever-favorite person of the night, Council Curbs. We're in executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to read that?
I would. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss due process proceedings related to non-renewal teacher contracts pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2. The open meeting to resume at this location at 8:00 PM. In addition to the trustees, the President, Human Resources Director Oshwiger, the college attorney, Vice President Huerta, Vice President Porgy should be included in the executive session.
Hearing the motion, is there, hearing the recommendation, is there a motion? So, motion and second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, will be in executive session until 8:00. Thank you all. We're back in session from our executive session, there is action to be taken after that executive session. Council Curbs will be reading resolution for.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board adopt Resolution Number 201916. It's a resolution repealing Resolution Number 201907, which was a resolution of intent to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Danny Hopkins and accept the resignation of Danny Hopkins that was received on August 1st dated July 31, 2019.
Hearing the recommendation of council, is there a motion?
That's a move.
Motion, trustee recommend one?
Second.
Second, trustee Portle, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. And that completes our agenda for the night and our meeting adjourned, thank you.